Seeing it's four thirty, I would like to call the Kansas City Council Joint Work Session, FY twenty twenty six to twenty thirty Capital Improvement Plan to order. And I'd like to, before, we have our city manager here who will be presiding over this portion. But we do have, since it is a joint work session, we have some of our commissioners here. And I'd like to just have them, usually just introduce, but we have a number of them here. I'd like to have them just maybe stand up and introduce themselves and what commission they're on. So we could put a face, name to a face, or a face to a name, or how we want to call it. So go ahead, Jeanie.
Ms. Jeanes, first.
Thank you. And Josh is our student rep. I know you're probably looking like this guy's pretty young to be on the car. So thank you all for your service. We'll start out with that. And I'll turn it over to Terry.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council and commission members. Appreciate the opportunity to meet here tonight. You know, this document and this effort's kind of the culmination of an effort that started with each, a lot of the department heads as liaisons to the different commissions and committees at the city to start talking about the capital needs and priorities of the city as in the purview of these commissions. That culminates in this document. This document is, for the administration, serves two purposes. It serves as a foundation for our efforts to solicit grant funds, both at the federal and state level. We target having this adopted mid-January for input into the state CAPSIS system. That's the legislative mechanism for requesting capital grants. And then it also lets us meet with our federal congressional delegations and talk about opportunities for funding. Beyond that, it also serves as the basis for the work that we will do as the administration in preparing the FY twenty six operating budget. And that operating budget will include capital funding for a lot of the priorities that are presented here within. So with that, I'd like to turn it over, Mr. Mayor, to Lee Frye, the city's Public Works Director, who has been putting this plan together.
Thank you, everybody, for attending tonight. So what Terry and I kind of discussed was, we'd like to kind of go through, highlight the FY twenty six projects. If anybody has questions on other projects, we're certainly able to get into those. You know, we have an hour and a half here, so we can go longer and get into some of those projects if anybody wants to. If not, we can run through the FY twenty six projects, and if anybody has questions, we can stop and go through those. As I put this plan together with the help, you know, of all the staff here at the city, I did make a few changes in projects down the line, a lot of stuff in the general fund and water and sewer fund from discussions kind of with staff in Public Works as we were pushing around some of those projects with where we saw the immediate need. So if you see anything, again, have any questions, please, please let me know. So we'll start off with the airport fund for FY twenty six. And this FY twenty six, we just had a meeting this week with FAA, one of our monthly check-ins. So we are expecting some modifications to this when you see the final plan in a month from now. So the highlights that I'll hit on that are the runway rehabilitation project. We currently have funded and is going into design, or it's finishing up design on that. But we are expecting to appropriate a little bit of additional city funding for that, for the match that's expected for the project. So we're going to be adding that back in here, even though we already have local funds appropriated. But we're expecting additional. And we're expecting, you know, around $25 million of grant funds to be coming to us this fiscal year as match from FAA for grant funding for that project. So we'll be putting that in here to show that we're expecting to get that as a revenue this year to accomplish that project. Other items is this, item number two on here, the terminal road and parking lot improvements. We're not expecting to get near the level of FAA funding because of the way the parking lot is, it's revenue generating, so FAA won't pay for funding a lot of our parking lot replacements. So right now, we're going to pull that project off of the list, and we'll keep working on it and reviewing and seeing where that is on the priority list for local funding in the future as we move through projects. And lastly is the rehabilitate, the taxiways project that is an FY twenty six. So we're expecting to push that project. We're not expecting to get the grant funding for that until FY twenty seven. So we are going, we are working with our engineer right now to get just design funds for that project. So we're working on an estimate of that. So we'll have that finalized for what we're expecting in January. But right now, we're just going to be looking to appropriate local design funds for that project, and then will, which will be used as match in the future when we seek the grants funds for that project. But basically, just looking to start the design on the project with local funds at this point. So, yeah, essentially, we're going to go down to just having the runway rehabilitation project, the taxiway rehabilitation project, and then the last project on there for FY twenty six for the airport will be the animal control building roof replacement. It's scheduled for roof placement in FY twenty eight, but we are having a lot of leaks on it right now. So with the funding for this project, essentially, we'd be going into design of this summer, and I wouldn't expect us that we'd be replacing it until summer of twenty seven. So we'd only be replacing it about a year early by the time we actually get into construction of that roof replacement. So, and I know, councilmember next, that had some questions on that, that Terry might be able to handle, how the animal control building is being funded by the airport fund.
That's pretty much it. I forget how that came about.
Yeah, thank you, councilmember next. So I think there are two facilities that, how they're operated can be a little bit confusing. And the two of them are animal control shelter and the second one being the flight service station. When the animal control shelter was constructed, it was constructed using airport funds, and it was constructed on airport property. And as a result, the general fund annually pays to the airport fund, and don't quote me exactly on this percentage, it's either six or eight percent of the original construction cost for the building, plus eight percent of the value of the land, just like all of our other land leases are on the airport. So annually, the general fund is contributing to the airport fund those amounts. And because the, our, while we have no formal lease agreements, I think the city attorney would say that we really don't have lease agreements between ourselves, because the airport is the city and the city is the airport. The agreement is, is that because the airport fund receives that revenue on an annual basis and has since inception, since that facility was built, we paid them six or eight percent of the original construction cost plus the land value, that they are responsible for, basically, anything you would expect a landlord to be responsible for if you were renting a facility, like roofs, like major mechanical systems. You know, any minor improvements in the interior, that would be the responsibility of the city's general fund. Now, if we can shift from that, and I'll just preempt, so the flight service station, the FAA flight service station was built on airport property, but it was built using general fund dollars. So the general fund paid to build that building. The general fund receives the proceeds from our lease with the federally, from the FAA for the tenancy of the flight service station. And as such, the general fund pays the airport annually eight percent of the value of the property. And we take in all the revenue, and again, we are then now responsible for all major landlord costs associated with that building. Because I think you'll see later in the plan, I think under the general fund, you'll see the rooftop ventilation units being replaced at flight service as a general fund project. So I hope that kind of shows the relationship to those two facilities, and I agree, it seems a little odd to have the animal control shelter show up on the airport's project list.
So with that, I'll say that kind of wraps up the FY twenty six projects for the airport fund. And we can move into any of the other longer-range projects there? If anybody has any questions, or we can move into the general fund, or?
Thank you, Director Frye. You mentioned that the roof currently has some leaks to the FY twenty six funding for design, also set aside some money for repairs? I didn't catch if it did.
No, not for specific repairs. This, the $400,000 we're showing there would be for replacement of the roof structure itself. So a portion of that would be design funds, and the remainder would just be replacement funds. So any ongoing repairs that would happen until we get it replaced would just be coming out of operating funds.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, I guess, just for clarity, this, so as we move through these, I noticed on some of the other ones, the design was listed in separate years as the actual construction, and this is sort of combined. Is that, is, how do we know which, what is the design part and what year that's taking place as opposed to construction? Or does that assume that if it's designed, that's part of that construction year?
Yeah, so, I agree. I kind of tried to take some of that out of there so that we're not always splitting up all these projects into environmental assessments, design and construction. But we are going to split some of that out, like I said, for the taxiway project, where you're just going to be appropriating essentially local design funds to get started on that project. So there won't be any construction funds, but it is all essentially the same because it's all matching dollars. You know, it can be used for anything once we put it in there. So we don't, we don't want to appropriate funds that can't be used for design or construction, specifically. But, so making sure that we keep our descriptions broad so that they can be used for those, for the project as a whole. But, yeah, if that makes sense.
Yeah, just, just because when you go to twenty eight and twenty nine, one year's the design for the, our building roof replacement, the next year's the construction. So just wanted to see kind of where we're at there for clarity. Thank you. Councilmembers, honor.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. So question, project number four, the float base and taxiway Sierra for FY twenty twenty seven. It has listed grant funding of basically 9.6 million. Is that what you're hoping to get in grant funding, or do you actually have that grant, grant funding, like, solidified?
That would be hoping. So we don't have any of these funds, grant funds that are shown on here for the FAA projects, none of those are currently in our pocket. All of the FAA funding essentially comes after we have designed and bid the project, and then you have the final construction cost. That's the point where we go and submit those requests for the grant funding. If that's correct, or?
The only thing I would add, Councilmember Sonard, is that when we work with the FAA, the FAA goes through a very similar process to ours, except for they're doing it for every airport in the state. So the FAA projects their level of funding they are going to have available, and they start programming projects. So it's really incumbent upon us to work through these design things, have a constant communication with them to get into their funding queues. I will say also, they did notify us that for FY twenty seven, I believe, right now, they are overprogrammed, which means they've identified more projects and they're likely to have funding, and they're going to be looking for ways to push projects to subsequent years, or to phase projects to reduce their over, you know, overprogramming at this point. So, yes, what this should represent to you is that we expect these projects to be eligible for the airport improvement of the IP funds. And once they are eligible, if the FAA has funding, they will participate at a maximum of 93.75 percent, and we're responsible for six and a quarter.
And I guess at this point, I'd just like to open up, or, we got other commission members here, and this is a joint work session. So if you do have a question, I think we're going to be okay on time. So if you, do you have a question, just raise your hand, and I'll call on you.
So what happens if the grants?
Oh, yeah, we have to get. Might have to grab that end one.
I'm just curious, what would happen if the grants are not available?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. So if the grants aren't available, we, at that point, we would have a couple of options. The city, if we had the financial means ourselves, we could choose to complete the project and use 100% local funds. If that's not the choice, then likely the project would be late, would be delayed until we were able to secure the grant funds to make the projects happen.
Thank you, Terry.
Well, I will move into the general funds. So, starting out in FY twenty six of the general fund, the first project that we have identified is the Wildwood Drive rehabilitation. So we are currently looking at a total project cost here of 1.48 million dollars. We have about $280,000 in local funding that has already been appropriated for the Wildwood Drive project. So we're seeking a grant through the state of 1.2 million dollars for this project. We believe that should be enough to complete the project. It's obviously in poor condition with the Wildwood Correctional Facility being the main hub at the end of that road that's driving a lot of the traffic. We're hoping to get state funding for the road as the state facility is the main user at the end of the road. Did you have anything you wanted to add on that? Next project is the Alix Stormwater Paving and Repair Project. So we have a storm drain line on there, and you can see the picture in the project. We have been having some rotting out storm drain lines in that road that have been collapsing and causing some potholes, sinkholes in the road that we've been patching for the years. So currently, we have some funding already appropriated for this for design. So our crews are going to try to run a camera down that this winter and see what condition the piping is actually in, kind of determine our next steps forward for design. So the 600,000 is kind of a tentative number at this point, depending on what we see from that camera. I think that'll give us a better idea of what we need to move forward with that. So I hope to have that finalized by January when we move forward with finalizing this project. That money is essentially, if we need to do an entire replacement of the pipe, repave all the road on top of it for the section of storm drain pipe, that's kind of the worst-case scenario. So there's potential we could lower that value, but still trying to gather some more information on that. Streets condition assessment. So I added this one. This is new, wasn't on the previous projects. So what I'm looking to do is essentially hire a consultant to kind of go through all of the Keenei roads, the asphalt roads being the main priority I'd like to look at, and do a Pacer evaluation, get asphalt condition assessments of kind of all the city of Keenei roads. We did a previous assessment, I believe, in 2009 or seven. And so essentially, I'm just looking to update that. Essentially, that's all kind of old at this point. If we would have been recommending, you know, seal coating something 15 years ago, it probably needs to be repaved at this point because the condition has deteriorated so much. So trying to get an updated assessment of where all our conditions are so that we can create a new priority list for how we want to start tackling streets in the city. We may do some of this on the gravel roads as well. Our streets crew obviously has a pretty good handle on which of our gravel roads are in great shape and which ones could use some work. So I'm less concerned with getting assessments on those as much as more focusing on the asphalt, and those are much more costly repairs than doing the gravel work. So, yeah. So moving on from that, GIS stormwater lighting and road mapping improvements. So this project kind of goes hand in hand with some funding that I have as a request on the utility side of things for water and sewer department. We have, I'm sure many of you have looked online at our GIS viewer for looking at our water and sewer lines that we have shown. We're looking to increase that data, make it better, more usable for us in finding all our as-bills and helping contractors and homeowners looking for street lines. What we don't have on there is where all our storm drains are in the city. We have some mapping of where our streetlights are, but what we don't have is where all the underground lines are to connect all those streetlights together. So it's not the most useful thing when we get dig line locate requests. We can't pull up a map and say if there's a streetlight there, if there's a wire there. So the better data we can have in our hands, the better we'll be able to service contractors and dig line requests when that's coming in the future. Downtown asphalt crack sealing. So we have $200,000 plugged in for this. And I don't know if some of you have seen, on Main Street, last year, we did a couple patches with what's called a mastic product to look to seal some of the unraveling paving between the lanes of asphalt. So we're hoping to do that kind of in several areas in the downtown, and this should, this budget will utilize as much as we can to get as much work done as we can. But the idea is that, you know, once the summer, we have this funding available, we'd be able to go in, do a lot of those repairs, get some of those patches taken care of. A lot of the asphalt's in good condition in those roads, except for those seams just becoming really bad, and we're just patching, throwing a lot of asphalt into it, and it's not holding up very well at this point. Road improvements and repairs, this is another grant project that we're looking at. So we are planning on looking for kind of general roadway money from the state for our CAPSIS requests this year. Basically, just to supplement a lot of our roadwork. As we're kind of identifying here, some of our roads are in poor condition. My hope with a lot of this road improvement and repair money is that we can use it more toward gravel roads, and that could be through a combination of our city staff doing some of the work possibly, or some contractors hauling material and doing that as well. But a lot of our gravel roads in town could be improved by, you know, adding four to six inches of gravel on top and grating it in there, getting it all packed down, and it would really improve drainage on a road. Some of those ones, just over the years of grading and maintaining, a lot of that good gravel's been kind of pushed off to the side and not in the best shape anymore. So just a little bit of love and care for our roads, I think will go a long way. Next project is parking lot seal coating and repairs. So this is funds essentially for all of the city of Keenei buildings, except for parking lot owned buildings. So this is pretty much general fund buildings. Looking to crack seal, put a seal coat down, extend the life of all of our existing parking lots, as well as some other minor repairs, like patching some sidewalks, ADA ramps if we have needs, but fixing up some of the parking lots for a lot of our public buildings that people are using. Flight services RTU replacement, we already covered that one a little bit on the funding side, but essentially, the, there's some, we have a lot of complaints that come from that building of just poor conditions of that existing unit. So I've discussed with our building maintenance guys, and they're definitely passed the life of those pieces of equipment. So just looking to move on and get those replaced at this point. Next two items are some parks projects. So we've got a Beaver Creek Park Pavilion replacement, and we already have some other funds associated for an existing pavilion replacement that we need to work on as well. So we'd be looking to do something similar for that. And the other one is a tractor replacement for Parks and Rec for maintaining all the grass areas that they do as well. And then lastly, the item we have on there is city hall improvements. So this is a phased project. Right now, we're just looking for some design funds, essentially to look at a lot of the issues with this building, like our insulation, elevator repairs, ADA access, all those types of things. But we'd like to get a design consultant on board to essentially kind of identify a lot of those issues, see what a projected cost would be to do a lot of those improvements. And then, in theory, in FY twenty seven, we'll have a better number of what it'll actually take to do a lot of those repairs. So I'll open it up to questions at this point.
Questions? Councilmember Dotson?
Yeah, I've got a few. So, one, I think the street condition assessment's a great idea. That'll help us hopefully be able to target and show the need for grant funding in the future. The, one thing I was curious on, the Wildwood Drive, have we looked at ulterior, is there any alternative design work that could be done to see if we can lower that cost? I know we designed this road in one direction, and have we looked at other ideas that might not be quite as extravagant but still get the job done?
I have had some preliminary discussions with the engineer that did the designs on the road on that. It's possible we could, you know, we could look at just a shave and pave more, or raising up the grade of that to increase some drainage. I was going to have some additional discussions with the engineer on that, but we just kind of had preliminary discussions at this point of looking at options to save funds.
Okay. Yeah, and that would be something, I'd be curious to see how that might help save funds. I see a lot of these are grant funded for, hoping for state funding. I know we haven't been very successful the last couple of years with that. Have we looked at, is there any options for federal funding that we might be able to look at with these roadway projects?
Not that I'm aware of off the top of my head. There have been some grant funds that I've seen, escaping me off the top of my head, but a lot of them are more safety-oriented projects and things like that, Safe Streets, that we're seeing a lot of funding for. So it seems like the federal funding specifically for roads is more difficult to come by. You know, it might be a good thing in the long run, but at this point, I think it'd be better to kind of do it and see how it holds up. The couple of patches that we've done out there seem to have held up so far pretty well this winter, as opposed to just doing crack sealing that sometimes you get the, you know, rubber comes out when a greater hits it and pulls it down the road, and then your crack seal isn't there anymore. So it seems like a better long-term solution, but we'd like to put it in and see how well it works. And, you know, maybe it's something we go to in the future that we could do with our staff, but at this time, more interested in just getting it done.
And I totally agree. I know we've tried for the last few years trying to get some of that crack sealing done, and just with the staff we have, it's been difficult, it sounds like, working with weather. And I think definitely the right way to do it is to get a, try to get a third-party contractor that dedicate to just doing that. One other, on the pavilions, this is for the Beaver Creek. I know we had to demo a pavilion in South Forest. Is that on the forefront to move forward with replacement also?
I'll let Tyler answer that from Parks and Rec.
Director Frye mentioned it, that we had some funds and we were moving forward with replacing a pavilion, and that's the one he was regarding to in municipal park there. And that pavilion's been torn down, and then we're hoping to get a new one here in the next few months.
Okay, thank you.
And then, Councilor Duffin?
Oh, thank you, I get a turn. In regards to the street condition assessment, I think that's great, overdue for sure. We've got a lot of road projects on the horizon, but does it make any sense, warm up in the cart before the horse here to try to get that in this year and do a mid-year appropriations so you can get the assessment done this summer to then start work? Or is that, or does it make more sense to keep it in the fiscal year '26?
It would definitely ease the timeline if we did something like that. I think even having it available July 1, I think if we have our ducks in a row and we're ready to roll and put that out, it's still possible to get an assessment work done before the snow flies next winter so that we can get everything in order and kind of get our priorities straight over the following winter.
Follow-up for city manager, is that, would it, could we do something like that? Would that be a huge hit, we had to shuffle a bunch of stuff around if we wanted to get it appropriated sooner?
So if the question is, does a general fund have the capacity to do it? Yes, it does. I mean, you could look at it as we would just, you know, spend that money sooner rather than later. If you're going to spend it in the FY '26 budget, we could do it by supplemental here in FY '25. It's the pleasure of council, you know, like Director Frye said, you know, our goal for that, it's obviously we can't get that work done until next spring because it's pretty hard to assess asphalt roads when they have snow and ice on them. So, you know, we could get started maybe a month or two months earlier next year if we did the money early, but I think, I think we can navigate it on a July 1, and we'll just plan to issue that RFP and get the work under contract early in the fiscal year.
Awesome. Oh, sorry. Awesome, thank you. The only last follow-up is, I know the focus is asphalt roads, but, and maybe we can just supplement with staff as for a comprehensive, all of our roads, to make sure we're not leaving, you know, anybody in a, in a bad spot. I know some of these roads have had some issues, and we've had some people come in here and discuss that, so it'd be good to see all the roads included, if possible.
Yeah, I think the goal would be utilize the funds that we have, and if we can stretch those to look at the gravel roads as well, I think we do that. Just, I think the asphalt roads are the priority in my mind, so that's the, the main thing I want to get done.
Any questions? Oh, Councilor Duffin.
Yeah, just maybe a suggestion, and maybe it doesn't work with this document, but every time we do this, you know, there's fiscal year '25 projects that maybe haven't been bid out, or they have, but they're not started, and they're on our minds, and it looks like, on the surface, like they've fallen away. They really haven't, you know what I mean? But if, if, if there could be a, under these categories, a fiscal year '25, maybe a different color, just in the preliminary or so, so we know that that's still happening, that hasn't gone away, no one forgot about it. If that's not too, too much difficulty, it just might, might help in the future.
Yep. And I'll add to that, typically in the back of the five-year capital plan, we do have a capital project schedule, and that's usually the item that kind of shows all of our existing capital project funds that we have and where they are in status, you know, design, construction, things like that. I don't have that included in this one, because I've been working on getting this ready, and that's kind of on my mind, and me and Lisa and Eric have been talking about that and getting that in order. So it's possible I'll have that when we have the January plan, and that's what I'm shooting for. But that, that's kind of what I'm hoping, is that that's that supplement that lets you know where all the existing active projects are.
I know we were talking about grant. Have there, with the, I know it's, we're looking at '27 now on the playground project in Old Town. I'm assuming we might get some kind of an update when we have our joint meeting with the Keene Eye Sewer Drive here next month, but have we heard anything? Has there been any forward movement on any funding for that as far as grant applications or?
Yeah, not that, not that we're aware of. I discussed that a little bit with Director Best to figure out if we had any funding, and there wasn't anything that he was aware of. So, you know, being as we'd have to appropriate, and it exists a significant amount of general funds to move forward with that project, at this time, we decided it was best to push it off here.
I was just curious, thank you.
Any further questions?
Okay, I can move on to Water and Sewer Funds. So this one's a little shorter. We don't have a ton of requests for the Water and Sewer Fund. We do have a lot of active projects going on right now in the water sewer area. We are working on a digester project to do some repairs to that and add some new blowers, as well as we're doing design on a pump house improvement project as well. So we have a lot of significant funds up in the air, already kind of taking up a lot of our time, so we didn't want to add too much to the scope of work that we already have there. So the first item we have is disinfectant generation equipment. So this is a phased project right now. We're looking at just getting design funds to see what the construction cost would be. Eric Jean and I have been looking a lot at, right now, we haul in liquid chlorine at all of our sites to disinfect water, disinfect the wastewater treatment plant, the effluent there. So we're looking at whether it makes more sense to generate chlorine onsite and possibly have a, there's definitely a fund savings doing that, it's just a question of what the return on investment is, of how long it'll take us to pay off that system, or whether we can get some grant funds to help pay for that and make it a better, a better payoff. There, there does appear to be other grant options for getting construction of those systems. So we're just kind of in the preliminary phase on our end, but we would like to get some design funds for that so we can get some harder numbers on all of that. The next is the GIS Mapping Improvements that I spoke about earlier. So again, this is just more on the water and sewer side, adding more updates to our data and helping make that system more functional for our guys. Wastewater Treatment Plant and Water Treatment Plant Fencing Improvements. We do have some failing fence at the wastewater treatment plant that we're looking to get replaced, as well as the water plant has several areas that are currently unfenced. So we're looking to add some security to those sites so that people can't just walk right into them. We are also, we do have some grant funds that we see as a good opportunity for this, so we're pursuing a grant that might be able to help offset those costs as well. The last item we had listed on here is some Trading Bay Road Sewer Insulation. So this is some commercial properties that we have sewer services run to. The sewer main in that area is really shallow, so we're looking at adding some insulation over those sewer lines within the right-of-way so that our portion of the sewer services are better insulated, and we don't have any freezing issues, at least on our end of the sewer. And that's what I've got for Water and Sewer, if anybody has any questions.
Councilor Kessana.
Thank you. Thank you, Lee. I noticed that you mentioned fencing and that there are fencing gaps, and this would help improve site security. Are there additional funds you would need to improve site security for things like cameras or anything like that, or would this be sufficient for those locations?
It's possible. It depends on what we're able to get with the grants. Cameras, I wouldn't mind putting in a camera system at some of these sites because it definitely would add security, but we do have internet connectivity issues, especially at the wastewater treatment plant, that a camera might not be the most effective tool anyway at those sites.
Thank you. One other question is, the Trading Bay Road Sewer Insulation Project, sufficient to keep that piping warm, or do you guys need additional funds for heat trace or anything like that?
We wouldn't be expecting to do any heat trace. We were expecting to just put insulation down, and that should add enough cover over it that we shouldn't have any issues.
All right, thanks.
Further questions on Water and Sewer?
Just a question, and maybe it's, I know we've talked about lift stations, but I didn't see any mention in the current budget about any lift station upgrades. Is that in the, that is further than five years out, or did I just miss that?
Yeah, so we do have, FY '27, we have money shown for Broad Street Lift Station Reconstruction. We have funding currently available for three lift stations, Mile 13, Mile 14, and one more I'm blanking on the name of, that we've appropriated a pretty significant amount of money for. We are redoing some final designs on a couple of those lift stations and hoping to get those out to bid here this winter for construction this summer. I'm expecting we'll definitely have funds to do two and possibly three, once we make the changes that are cutting out some of the higher-end cost items on there. So we'll, we'll definitely be seeing some construction work on them, I'm expecting this, this summer.
I was just curious, because I only saw the one, and I know we had talked about it, but again, I think that comes down to, we have other projects that are still in the works that we've already talked about that just aren't listed on here.
Yep.
Thank you.
I will move on to the next fund. Which is the Senior Citizens Fund. We don't currently have anything shown for this fund in the next fiscal year. The only items that we had in there was the landscaping project, Phase 1 and Phase 2. We decided to push those back into their discussions with them as they're waiting for the bluff erosion project to be completed and see where the final slope of that bluff ends up. They don't want to do any landscaping until that kind of gets established and they see what their frontage is, if that makes sense, so. Any questions on that, or I can move on?
Questions?
The front, I know we had talked about needing it replaced on the front entryway to the senior center.
Yep.
What's the status on that?
Our maintenance crews is, we're planning on cutting a hole in there to kind of see the existing condition of the structural members in there to determine if it's going to be usable or not. If the structural member is good, we'll just be releasing a project to re-roof the structure there and do some, some of the electrical issues that we also have in that, in that section. If it isn't, then we'll be probably getting an architect onboard to figure out what we need to do to kind of reconstruct the entire thing. But we're, we're in the kind of investigation phase to see how bad the damage is in that section.
Other questions? Seeing none?
Okay, so next is the Congregate Housing Fund. So the only project we have on here is elevator maintenance. This is different than the capital budget that they approved in the commission meeting. We ended up pushing back the apartment, kitchen, and bathroom remodel project to appropriate $100,000 toward elevator maintenance. We have an existing $50,000 that was already appropriated for elevator maintenance at this, but to do kind of a complete upgrade and modernization of that elevator, it's looking more in the $150,000 range is what it costs to do that. So this is a simply, essentially supplementing that funding so that we can do a complete kind of overhaul on that elevator of the four elevators that, in the City of Keene Eye, it's definitely the one that gets the most use, so that's kind of our priority of getting that one upgraded into better condition. Any questions?
Questions on Congregate Housing? Seeing none?
And the last one's easy, it's personally used fishery, and we don't have anything planned for that fund this year. I will say, in personally used fishery, we do have some active, we do have some funding available that's going to be used for replacing floats and concrete, and we're kind of doing some investigation on that right now, planning on releasing something for constructing, reconstructing a lot of floats for the fishery, and then seeing how much funding we have remaining before we proceed forward with doing some concrete replacement on the ramps as well. And that essentially goes through all the FY '26 projects for the capital improvement plan. So if anybody has any specific questions on anything else, I'm, I'm happy to answer.
Questions? Councilor Duffin?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. This probably in '25, FY '25 still, the programming, I believe it's called, for the fire station, police station, is that still on our list of projects to do?
Yes, it is. We actually, it's on the street right now. We released an RFP for programming and assessment of the emergency services department, so we just had a pre-bid on that yesterday, or a pre-proposal, excuse me. So we had several consultants come down and visit onsite, several more attended on Zoom, and we did a walkthrough of the facility, so that project's moving forward.
Awesome, thank you.
Any other questions?
No other questions?
Okay. I did see a couple other commission members come in a little late. We did a little introduction, so if you guys, the ones that haven't introduced themselves, if they don't want to just say, we'll start with Sarah back there. No, happy anniversary, by the way, but you can just tell your name and then what, just commission your own.
Sarah Goffin.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
White Water, Black Sewer.
Okay, Rachel?
Rachel Frank, Town of Cleveland.
Okay, thank you. I know we don't do this all the time, so it's nice to everybody kind of get to put a face to a name, so. With that, we can move on to public comment. Is there anybody from the members of the public who'd like to address the joint work session at this time? Do we have anybody online? Is nobody online? Okay, seeing no other public comment and no other business, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, I appreciate you coming out.